... meeting for November ninth, 2021. May I have a roll call, please?
County Commissioners Apter, Bartlett.
Here.
Best, Duffy.
Here.
Lazara.
Here.
Deputy Director James.
Director Lepore.
Here.
That's the open public meeting law?
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement that open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location included in the annual notice adopted at the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk posted in the administration building and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Please stand for the invocation.
O God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our county commissioners in this county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Please join me. Commissioner Duffy?
... of the United States of America as the Republic for Justice, one nation under God, invincible for liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing to remember all the members of the men and women of the military who died while serving the United States Armed Forces and those who have died from COVID-19 in Passaic County, especially the 1,811 residents of Passaic County. Thank you. Ever motion to approve the minutes of October 26, 2021? Make that motion. Motion made by Commissioner Duffy.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
All right, Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Director. First on the Administrator's Report is the Fall Award Ceremony for the County of Passaic and City Green Dig-In. We have the Executive Director, Jennifer Papa, here with us. Come out forward. If you feel comfortable standing or you're certainly welcome to sit at the table, it's up to you guys.
Will the presentation play by itself or somebody?
No.
We'll stand. Okay, we'll stand. Well, we're just here to celebrate the Fall 2021 Dig-In Awards for this season. Jenny's going to read all of the grantees that got awards this season that include community gardeners, new gardens, existing gardens, and then some tree and bulb grants. I just wanted to point out that this has been an amazing program during the pandemic. We've had so much feedback from the gardeners themselves about what this has meant to be able to spend time together outside, to be able to grow this healthy, fresh food, and be able to share it with their community. We've also additionally ran the Weasel Brook Community Garden this year, which was a great success until Ida came and flooded it, but before that, all of the beds were taken. The community members really enjoyed it. They grew, you know, hundreds of pounds of vegetables in that garden, some of which went to some food pantry donations. So we're really excited about that partnership with the county-built garden. So Jenny's going to go on through the list of the Fall 2021 awardees.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us. And I know a lot of the grantees are watching on Facebook, so here we go. So Dig-In by the Numbers from 2014 through 2020. We've had 14 municipalities participate in Dig-In, which includes 61 community gardens, 26 pollinator gardens, and we've successfully planted over 22,000 daffodils. So these are our awards for this season. We had new school-based community gardens, Alonzo Moody Academy in Patterson, and then three community schools in Passaic, including Passaic School 20, Passaic School 21, and Passaic School 7. For returning community gardens, we had Shomri Torah in Wayne, the Jewish Family Services and Children's Center of Clifton, Passaic, and the Park Hill Condominiums in Passaic. We had many tree and daffodil grants. For this fall, it was about 10,000 bulbs and 15 trees. This includes the Juvenile Education and Awareness Project in Passaic, French of Garrett Mountain in Clifton, the Borough of Pompton Lakes, the Library Association of Ringwood, Hawthorne Shade Tree Commission, Rutgers Master Gardeners of Passaic, Clifton Beautification Committee, Bloomingdale Free Public Library, and Eastside Park in Patterson. So I'll read a quick quote from one of our participants. "The Dig-In funding was truly the most important reason that our garden has been so stable and productive for the past five years. We've been able to continually improve our soil and keep our fences in good repair and make sure that our watering system is leak-proof. And everyone in the garden has become such good friends. We love sharing our produce and swapping advice about the best growing practices." Thank you, Dig-In. So thanks for having us. We appreciate it. It was a great season.
It's more fun when we can call up all of the gardeners themselves and present them, but we really appreciate it and we thank you on their behalf for the continued support of this program. Thank you. Did you have a question?
Jen and Jen?
Yeah.
You guys take it easy. First of all, appreciate all the hard work that you guys put into this effort. It's an rewarding experience on both ends, I believe, and we're just so happy to have you, you know, on the team.
Whoops, sorry. We're just so happy to have you on the team.
I appreciate that.
Any other Commissioners? How many years have we been partnering now with City Green?
I think it's seven years now.
Yeah, it's been a great partnership.
Yeah.
Really a lot of...
Yeah, and it's...
Grown over the years and...
It's grown in ways we didn't anticipate. It's been really successful. A lot of people in Passaic County taking advantage of it.
Great.
All right, congratulations to all the participants.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, folks, next on the agenda is discussion that most folks are here for, I believe, and that would be the Tennessee Pipeline Project. And what we're going to do is we're going to have the folks from the pipeline give their presentation, and then after that, I believe, Labor is here and to give their comments regarding this pipeline. And then from there, I'll open it up to the Board Commissioners for any questions that they may have to the pipeline officials.
Members of the public?
There will not be discussion from the members of the public during this aspect of it.
Wow.
Simply because we have gotten a number of emails, letters, unless legal tells me otherwise. Well, no, there's going to be a public portion.
Yeah, so there'll be the normal public portion, but there'll be no debate back and forth after the, while the presentation is going on.
But anyone from the private business trade can come up and speak.
Everyone has three minutes to speak, correct?
Correct. But no one else in the public, so unless you're a member of a private building trade, you cannot speak.
No, no, anybody, any member of the public will be able to speak.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
So I'd like to call on Alan Four from Kinder Morgan, who is the parent company of the Tennessee Pipeline. I guess you guys could take a seat at the table.
Okay.
I know you have representatives with you if you want to introduce them. Mark Roche, I know you're here in part representing Labor. If you want to come forward, I don't know if there's anybody else that you want to So if I could, just from the far left, why don't we just introduce yourselves and who you're representing, and then Alan, I guess you could start with the presentation once everyone has introduced themselves.
Brian Jack, the business manager of Local 274. Mark Roche, President of Passaic County Building Trades, and I represent electricians.
Alan Four, Vice President, Kinder Morgan.
Daniel Ortega, Local 825 Labor Management Fund.
Daniel Maxian, Director of Project Management for Tennessee Gas Pipeline.
Caesar Gami, Local 825 Operating Engineers and Business Agency. Who was that? Caesar Gami, Local 825.
Sarah Scolera, New Jersey Laborers Union Regional Office.
Great. All right, I know, Alan, we have a presentation, I believe, right?
While he's getting the presentation up, I want to thank you on behalf of Kinder Morgan and Tennessee Gas for the opportunity to, is it okay if I take this? For the opportunity to speak to the Commissioners tonight. We know this, our proposed project has attracted a lot of attention, and it always, it has always been our intention to work with all stakeholders affiliated with our projects, and certainly the Passaic County Commissioners are an important part of this project, as are the residents of the county. A couple of minutes just as an overview of our company. I think most of you are familiar with what we do, but Kinder Morgan is in the transportation and storage business of energy products. And the Tennessee Gas Pipeline that we're talking about today is a major transporter of natural gas for, really, the entire United States, but focused primarily on the eastern United States. Eleven thousand, over 11,000 miles of natural gas transmission, providing gas from as far away as the Gulf to as far north as New England. A major provider of natural gas, an important commodity for all purposes of energy in today's energy climate. Overall, we have 70,000 miles of pipeline across our system. We're very proud to have a strong partnership with organized labor, who are very involved with the construction of this project, but it's an historic affiliation that we have because we know that their work provides for the best and safest construction of pipeline projects. Specific to our proposed project in Passaic County, we, it is called the 300, East 300 Upgrade Project. And how we decide, a question comes up a lot of how we decide to build projects. Why are you building this? Every project we build in the 40-plus states where we do business is for a specific purpose, and it's to serve customers. And what are customers? At the end of the day, customers are homes and businesses in the United States. That's who we serve. That's where our natural gas goes. It's to heat and cool homes and businesses. And when we look at expansion of our system, we look at how can we expand that system with the least impacts possible? Impacts could be environmental impacts, they could be construction impacts, they could be landowner impacts. What can we do to make these projects the least impactful? And that's what we've identified here. We know there's an additional need for natural gas in the region. This is really the case in all across the United States, but we know certainly in the Northeast, a growing need for natural gas. As we convert from other forms of energy, be it coal or nuclear or other systems, natural gas is coming in as an additional source of energy for homes and businesses. So rather than build a new pipeline, a new pipeline system, this is an expansion of an existing system, incremental expansion. How do you do that? What assets do you already have that you can expand upon? We already have pipelines here, so what we're doing is we're expanding to two compressor stations and building one new one. And the one new one we're building here is in Passaic County. And there's no, there's nothing beyond that as far as construction. There is no new pipeline construction as part of this. I've heard questions asked a lot, are we building a new pipeline? No, we're actually utilizing the assets that we have, the pipelines that we have, and expanding them specifically for purposes of additional need for natural gas. We also don't build for now. We build for 20 or 25 years in the future. So what that means is, once this expansion is in service, there is a need for this natural gas now, and we hope to begin construction on our project next year, but 20, 25, 30 years into the future, and we know that by long-term, specific contracts to fill this additional capacity on the line, to service additional customers. So we look forward to interaction with the Commissioners tonight and answering questions. Daniel Maxian, who's our Director of Project Management, is now going to walk us through the specifics of construction of the site and our plans, and also show a short animation, which gives you a good idea of exactly what this will look like. Daniel?
Okay. Thank you, Alan, and again, thank you Commissioners for allowing us to come and provide some information to you about the East 300 Upgrade Project. So Alan covered this slide here a second ago, so specifically, as we start looking at the proposed West Milford Compressor Station. It's located at Block 4601, Lot 17, in West Milford Township, Passaic County. It's been previously disturbed as a rock quarry and other industrial uses over the years. As Alan mentioned, as we look for sighting of new projects, we look to find areas where we can minimize impacts. Finding a location that's been previously disturbed, used for other areas, already have impacted the immediate area, those are locations that are prime for us to try and redevelop for better purpose. So as we look at this site, it's approximately 44 acres in size, of which the facility will only ultimately occupy about 12 acres of that for actual footprint. We'll see some graphic renderings of that here in a couple of slides to give better perspective onto what that looks like. Another reason why this site is ideal for us, and it minimizes the impacts of new infrastructure, is that it's immediately located adjacent to our existing pipeline system in the area. So kind of the clear, the clear area that's running left and right across this picture is our existing pipeline easements where the pipelines are located. As part of our, as part of our sighting and our project layout, we have put facilities in locations so as to not directly impact any streams, freshwater wetlands. It's been determined there's no significant impact to migratory birds or other sensitive species or habitats. We've consulted with U.S. Fish and Wildlife, we consult with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and ultimately, our federal regulator, which is the FERC, another acronym, but the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. So we have several layers of local, state, and federal oversight that looks at these projects for not only environmental impacts, but other general impacts as well. So a couple of just graphical representations here. The image on the left is just showing the existing site as it appears. Now, this picture is probably about two years old, but as it appears today, the picture on the right is a rendering of ultimately what the station will look like post-construction. The buildings you see there are a combination of a couple of things, which not only the video will explain a little better, but I'll also talk about here on the, on the next slide. So primarily, what is this project? It is a compressor station that will contain a 19,000 horsepower, electric motor-driven compressor unit. It's going to be housed in a new acoustically insulated compressor building. That's the, kind of the building you see in the top center of the picture. The other facilities that will support this operation are an office building, which is kind of located to the bottom right, gas coolers, gas filtration equipment, and an emergency generator. The emergency generator is only there to power our safety and control and computer systems in the event of a power outage. It's not there to run, run the main engine, it's just there to keep the station, station systems online. Speaking of safety and control systems, as a new construction, new facility, this will be housed with state-of-the-art redundant safety systems. So there's really three levels of redundancy at a minimum that we look at. One is local. So each of these stations contain pressure sensors, temperature sensors, real-time monitoring systems and computers that locally monitor the health and operations of the system and make sure it's running within its operating parameters. The second layer is onsite personnel. So Kinder Morgan will have people reporting to this location on a regular basis, they'll there, be there during regular business hours on a daily and weekly basis. And then the third layer is real-time monitoring from our corporate gas control facility back in Houston, Texas. So we see the same thing that computer systems see real-time locally, we will see that in real-time in Houston and can make adjustments to the, to the operating parameters of the station at all three of those levels. So state-of-the-art controls, making sure that the engine runs within the limits it's supposed to. So a couple of highlighting things here. Again, it's an electric drive engine, so it has no direct emissions from, from the compressor itself. We've set it back in the back part of this property within lower elevations of the quarry to minimize lighting impacts, to help minimize and reduce acoustical noise coming from the area, as well as provide some additional visual screening and visual buffer to the properties around this, this station. And again, we've talked about, it's an overall site of 44 acres, of which our footprint, which you see here of driveway parking and building, is about 12 acres. So hopefully, this will play, and this will give a little bit of better context and some, some additional background and information about our regulatory situation, our oversight, as well as some context about the facility itself.
As part of the East 300 Upgrade Project, Tennessee Gas Pipeline is proposing to build a new electric motor-driven compressor station to be incorporated into its existing pipeline system. The new compressor station will be located near the township of West Milford, Passaic County, New Jersey, on an abandoned 47-acre corn site. The Tennessee Gas Pipeline system consists of 11,750 miles of pipeline and 83 compressor stations. Tennessee Gas Pipeline will adhere to all applicable regulations, permit conditions, and best management practices from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, and the U.S. Department of Transportation, USDOT, during the planning, construction, and operational phases of the project. This includes complying with wetland and water body construction and mitigation procedures to protect local water quality and water bodies like the Monsville reservoir. The Tennessee Gas Pipeline will employ environmental inspectors during construction to ensure the regulations, permit conditions, and best management practices are being followed. The appropriate air authorizations will be obtained for station equipment, and best management practices will be implemented to reduce emissions. The safety of our neighbors is a top priority for Tennessee Gas Pipeline. The new compressor station will be monitored 24/7 by Tennessee Gas Pipeline's Gas Control Center in Houston, Texas, and includes sophisticated gas detection, fire detection, and emergency shutdown systems in the unlikely event of an operational disruption or emergency. Special directional light fixtures will be utilized at the station to direct the light toward the buildings and ground, ensuring only indirect light is visible outside the property. The new compressor station will support the local economy in West Milford by creating over 40 temporary construction jobs and generating local property taxes on an ongoing basis.
Okay, and we will also be posting, excuse me, we'll be posting a link of that on our Kinder Morgan website under our, our project homepage, which will provide a link to the, the county for posting on, on your page for that as well. Lastly, just a couple of comments here about economic impact. So currently, Tennessee Gas is the, the second largest taxpayer there in township of West Milford at just under $1 million. The incremental annual taxes as part of this expansion will generate another $660,000 in estimated tax revenue. This will create approximately 40 union jobs during construction, as well as the associated economic impacts. And then lastly, we did commission a study, an economic study from Rutgers University talking about larger-scale economic impacts, and the numbers on the left are for the total East 300 project. The numbers on the right are specific to compressor Station 327 in West Milford. So it's estimated that the project will generate approximately 566 total job years, which is one, one job years equivalent to one job lasting one year, just under $50 million in GDP, 26.4 million in labor compensation or income, $2 million in state tax revenues, and .6 million in local tax revenues. This is the, the money that will come into this area during the construction process. That's what, that's what these numbers are estimated to mean. And lastly, as Alan mentioned earlier, you know, a big portion of this project helps increase supplies and access of natural gas into, into this region of our, of our pipeline network as, as part of the execution of this project. So that's it for our presentation. I'll pause here for any questions from the Commissioners or as you wish to move on.
We'll have Representatives from Labor present their comments.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mark Roche, and I'm the President of the Passaic County Building Trades. It's an organization that has 18 different trade unions represented on it. We have several hundred of our skilled craft people, from asbestos workers to steam fitters that would love to work on this project that is right in their backyard. I'd just like to thank the Board for allowing members of the building trades to address the Commissioners, and statewide, we're in favor of this project. Now, I do not live in West Milford, but as you can see, we have members here today that would be building this project. The project will employ our contractors, and members will earn tens of thousands of man-hours with our pay and fringe benefit packages. So that's 40, 40 jobs for a year, two years. You know, that's a pretty good hit, pretty good way to pay your healthcare and your pension and your annuity and stuff like that. We're OSHA-trained in safety, we all been through an accredited apprenticeship, and many of us have to pass a drug test yearly in order to be able to work. We pay for our, our own healthcare and are part of our own pension and annuity plans that we pay for out of our salary, which will help all of us in retirement. I'll let our members gathered here tell you why they think this plan should not have county opposition to it. Thank you again for listening to the facts about the project, and especially allowing the people that have a vested interest in the construction of this project, and who are raising or have raised their families in West Milford, and are taxpayers to Passaic County and West Milford to be heard during the public portion. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from Labor want to comment?
Do you guys want to say something?
Good evening. My name is Daniel Ortega. I am with Local 825 Operating Engineers, Labor Management Fund. We represent over 8,500 members. Our territory, it's the entire state of New Jersey, and we have five counties in the Hudson Valley in New York. We have about over 1,000 signatory contractors in our ranks. We obviously, we're in favor of this project, but one of the main reasons, it's not just because of the jobs that it's going to provide. We have about 300 of our members who are residents of the county of Passaic. They not just only work here and live here, but this project is important to them, primarily because of the benefits that it will have. We do know and understand that the project, the final deliver product of the natural gas by Kinder Morgan is not going to be here in the state of, of New Jersey, but some of our members actually work where the final product is going to go, and their jobs are important. We actually have members who live in West Milford who work in the state of New York, both in Brooklyn and Orange County, where this project is important for the, for the livelihood. So I know many times people come before the Board and say, how is this going to benefit us here locally? And here's the perfect example of that. Another reason why I'm here today is because back in March, I submitted a letter to this Board, and I never heard from any of the Commissioners except for the Chairman of the Board. And even to this day, we have not heard from any of the Commissioners of this, about this project. And we think that, you know, being the consequences of the project, we were surprised. I believe I heard that there was a meeting about this project two weeks ago, the day before the meeting. You know, and it's very interesting how throughout the years, we've had relationships with lots of members of the Board in different aspects, and we have always been told that Labor is an important presence, an important part of the day-to-day activities of this county. And it's, you know, really disappointing that, you know, even to today, we haven't heard from many of the members of the Board to say to us, listen, this is the reason why we don't believe that this project should go forward, or this is the reason why we're in favor of the project. And, you know, we're always here to listen to, to the Boards and to have an open conversation. If, if the Board would have reached out to us in a much more open way, we would have had a conversation about the economics and the way how the, the energy is provided in this state and how we move forward with it. Our members are not just only about natural gas. Natural, natural gas companies are very good to us. They reach out to us immediately whenever there is a project, and they say, look, we want to work with you, we want to give this work to your members. Unfortunately, it's not the same with a lot of the renewable projects. We do every single aspect of energy utilization in the state of New Jersey and the state of New York. We build... We build solar, we build hydro, we build geothermal, natural gas, we, we, uh, nuclear. We built everything. We're involved in every single proj, project that is related to energy in the state. However, it's very difficult for our members to even get a meeting with a lot of the, the renewable energy projects. They won't listen to us, they won't talk to us, they won't even contemplate hiring our contractors and members. But at the same time, whenever there is a natural gas project, they not only reach out to us, but they bring us to the table. They make sure that our members get paid the wages and benefits immediately. And it's a, it's very difficult to be constantly going back and forth with elected officials to try to explain to these things, especially when, when we are trying to reach out and our call to action is not being taken into consideration. You know, the, we, you know, like I said before, we've done many of these projects in the past, we'll continue to do these projects. We want to continue being part of the communities and part, part of the conversation. We just want to make sure that, you know, the members of this board, any other board, listen to what labor has to say from the beginning and take our thoughts and our members into consideration, and not just come out and say, "Well, we're against the project because we don't like it," or without actually talking to many of our members.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. I'm Ed Justco with Local Two Seventy-Four, the pipe fitters. Two Seventy-Four controls the, the pipeline welders in the state of New Jersey, and this does provide a lot of work for us that live in West Milford. A lot of our members live up here. And not only is it a great project, but it's, uh, energy efficient, there's no emissions. I, I can't understand where the backlash would be against this project. It just doesn't make sense to me. Even our past president, Obama, said, "Natural gas is the cleanest energy to go." I don't, I just don't understand why the, the environmentalists are against this. Other than that, West Milford approved it. I think it's a, a great project. It's a great project for my members, for me, and that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. At this time, I'll open up to the board for questions, either to Labor or to the pipeline folks.
Listen, I guess I'll start through the chairman. I, I am from West Milford, been there for over forty years. How old is this original pipe? I hear all kinds of stories.
Yeah, so the original pipeline was installed back in the nineteen-fifties.
How old would that have been? Thirty-five?
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
How old is the original pipe?
Yeah, so the original pipe was installed in the nineteen-fifties, so about seventy years, sixty-five years. The, the second line in that area was installed about eight to ten years ago. So the other one's about ten years old.
That's kind of old, seventy years for one pipe? Is that the environment? Hot, cold, gets cold up there?
Well, so our pipeline systems undergo a pretty rigorous integrity management process. We're continually monitoring them and inspecting them to make sure that their useful life continues to be useful.
I'd be concerned, seventy years, I'm, you know, I'm just a layman. Chemicals released, what are the chemicals that get released? I hear this, when it's released, there's all kinds of benzines, there's all kinds of chemicals that go out.
Well, so, so the gas that transports through our pipeline has already been processed or filtered, refined, prior to entering the system.
I mean, that's it, how, what are the chemicals that are released?
Right, so, so it'll be nor, normal things within a natural gas stream, so methane.
Do you have a list?
Uh, we, we do have a list, it's in, well, so the, the FERC has issued, this is part of their-
It'd be important for all these people to find out, when you release the gases, what they are?
Yeah, so, so we have a couple of areas-
I read your, I read your-
Okay, there's a couple of areas where that information is available. One is with our, the, the Federal Environmental Regulatory Commission, the Environmental Impact Statement that they issued and available on the federal docket. We've also provided some of that information on our project website under Frequently Asked Questions. It has an emissions table that is, that is readily available right now.
They can't answer that question tonight.
The, the information's already, I mean, I, I can provide you that information.
I'm not hostile here.
No, I understand.
I'm pro-labor, I live in West Milford, love to see projects, but I'm concerned about the environment, and that's where I'm coming from. I'm concerned about when I walk into, into ShopRite or anything else, all these neighbors, all these people from West Milford, and who are, who are labor people as well, say, "What are we doing up there?" You know, what, seventy-year pipe, and we're going to continue on with that? How much longer is that going to last?
It's another, maybe ten years. The new one we put in there.
Yeah, but we're still using the seventy, seventy-year. And now, listen, I'm, I'm for labor, I'd like to see a project, but it's so envi, environmentally sensitive that I'm concerned about that. And, and you know what? One mishap, and everything is for naught. I mean, we're talking about drinking water, we're talking about, you know, the environment, and it's my duty, I think, at least ask, ask the questions, and, and that's what I'm doing, you know? Believe me, I'm a tavern owner, I need you guys to work. But, all right, uh, let me see here. The area is just so sensitive. This, this has, this company has a history with the first project they did up on the mountain, they didn't even finish it, they were fined. Is that correct? Am I wrong on that? They soiled two, two lakes?
Well, so, so we have-
I was up there, by the way, I live up there, I was there when we were digging the trees.
So, so yes, we, we did have project issues the last time around, but we've resolved all of those.
You were fined.
Pardon?
You were fined for it.
Yes. Yes, but all of those have been subsequently resolved and inspected and approved by the Oversight Agency.
You were fined, you paid the fine, so it was resolved. God forbid we have a mishap down by the water, you know? That's my concern, to be honest with you. You know, labor is a part of, is an important part of this county. Economics is not as important as the environment, that's my, my opinion. I'm finished here, thank you.
Any other commissioners?
Yeah, let me just say, first of all, we didn't reach out to you. The first time I heard anything from you was about this, was from environmentalists. Didn't hear anything from the council in West Milford. Mark called me after he found out we had a, a thing going that might have passed here, right? Now, we just got something sent from Mark, I think we got it today or yesterday, which was a whole bunch of information that we did not have. You know, but you're saying that we didn't do something? You didn't do a very good job of contacting us. You didn't. And you can come here and chastise us for something that didn't happen, but except you didn't talk to us. I'm here every day, I didn't get a phone call from you. So let's just start there, all right? And I'm not mad at you, I'm just saying, it's not, it's a two-way street, it's not a one-way street. So what Terry's asking is some very important questions. Let me just ask, do you guys ever contemplate doing a performance bond, so that if there are these problems that it's covered, so that the taxpayers and the, and the residents that live there don't have to, uh, deal with a disaster that could happen? You've done performance bonds before, you've did a pipeline throughout the country, how many performance bonds have you purchased?
Uh, well, we, we have done performance bonds, mostly related to deterioration of infrastructure-
You got a seventy-year-old pipe, so, you know. What's, what's the increase in pressure to that pipe? Because that's what people are coming and saying, they're going to take, they're going to put a new compressor, it's gonna, it's gonna increase the pressure, and they're putting it through a seventy-year-old pipe. Now, I, I don't, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know, that doesn't sound good to me. Didn't work well in California, and it hasn't worked well in other places. So what's the protection that somebody has that that pipe won't burst?
So there is no increase to the allowable operating pressure of the pipeline. The pipeline will operate at the same pressures going forward as it is allowed to operate at today.
Well, that may be, but it's an old pipe. I agree with Terry. You know, just because it's allowed doesn't mean it's safe. We've seen that a million times in all sorts of projects throughout this country, a matter of fact, throughout the world. So, you know, I happen to watch The Engineering's Greatest Mistakes, it's a great show, you should watch it. So the answer is that anything can happen, right? And I am for labor, I, we run programs for all sorts of trades, and Mark knows that, right? And some unions reach out and train kids a lot better than other unions, and reach out to minority neighborhoods to pick up kids. I don't know what, what some of the unions do. I know we've been asking for programs to be put in for unions, because it's important. They're, they're not jobs, they're careers. So I believe that labor is where the careers are, and should be. I'm a Democrat, we built unions. So that said, we've heard all sorts of things that I don't, I don't know whether they're true. Trying to find out what, what happens with an old pipeline, I think that's a legitimate question, deserves a legitimate answer. A performance bond is not an unreasonable request. You might get my vote if you do a, a performance bond, because then I know that the public is safe. And that's, that's a reasonable request, right? And I really appreciate what you're saying. You know, I was told that this gas isn't coming here, it's going to China, and I'm like, "China? Let's, you know, we're, we're competing against them. Why would we do, be doing this and then sending it to China?" So is that correct, or that's not correct?
If this gas is going to China?
Yeah.
No, I do not believe this gas is going to China.
Right, it's New York State, correct?
Yes.
All right, so it's part of the American power grid, if you will?
Yes.
All right, well, that's not what we were told by some, some people, that's why, you know, there's confusion. So I'm happy that you came, because the only way that you get through these things is talking them out, right? And it's not by accusations or anything else, just talking them out. And Mark knows, we've been very good with labor in this county, you know, very good. It's not, your, your pipeline doesn't go in through Monksville reservoir, does it?
Uh, it, it goes underneath Monksville reservoir, that's correct.
Really? Under the dirt or under the water?
Uh, it goes well, well below the, the mudline, it goes well below the, the dirt of the bottom of the reservoir.
Okay, that, actually, that's not what I was told. I sit on the Highlands Council, so stuff like that concerns me, but if it's not going through the water, I feel a lot better than it going through the water. That didn't work well in California, off the coast, right? So anything can happen like that. I, I don't know what other concerns, it was, there was, I don't have a list.
I have, I have a question. It goes underneath the Monksville reservoir?
It does.
So you're going to dig underneath and put the pipe underneath?
Um, the, the, both pipelines were, well, the, the most recent pipeline was installed by a horizontal directional drill, so it was done with trenchless construction. It was basically bored underneath the reservoir and at depth well below the, the mudline of the reservoir.
Is that just a distance thing? I mean, is, is that what that is? Is that a distance problem that gets resolved by straight line is better?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand your question.
Why is it under a reservoir? Is it quite a question?
Well, so-
Is it because it's the shortest point between two points?
Well, back, back when the, yeah, so back when the second line was installed, it was installed immediately adjacent to, to the existing line to reduce associated environmental impacts with, with routing and, and new-
How long, how long ago was that put in?
I, I think approximately two, two thousand and twelve, or two thousand and ten, thirteen?
All right. It was a reservoir, because it used to be a town, so.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
The first one is, you mentioned in your presentation that there's going to be no new pipelines, correct?
That's correct.
And yet, it was said that you are expanding the existing pipelines.
We're, we're expanding the capacity of the existing pipeline system.
So you're pushing more gas through?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And those pipelines, I guess you believe, are stable enough to carry that extra pressure?
Well, again, the pipelines will not operate at increased pressure. The, the pipelines will operate at the same pressure they're allowed to operate at today.
Mm-hmm.
What, what we're doing with these compressor stations is we, we, we've more normalized or more leveledized the pressure of which the gas travels through the system. So instead of it cycling up and down, the compressor stations help provide a more linear fashion of, of pressure. The, the pressure's where we get the additional capacity, I'm starting to get a little, um, the, the ultimate pressure of the pipeline system does not increase.
Okay. What is the effect of, God forbid, there is a power outage on the compressor and the pipelines? And I know you said that your generator will feed to the computers and whatnot. What would the effect of an outage be on the rest of it?
Well, so, so if the, the power goes out, then the compressor station will turn off and shut down.
That's it?
That's it.
It doesn't get any worse than that?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
It just turns off.
Uh, the detention ponds, what are they used for?
Uh, so those are stormwater detention ponds, so as, when it rains, the, the, when, when the rainwater hits the ground, it'll route to the detention ponds, will, they'll detain and soak into the ground in those areas.
So there won't be any flooding then? Any extra flooding around that area?
No, the detention ponds are there to help mitigate the stormwater issues.
Okay. And in the last couple of years, and I, I know you have many miles of pipeline, have you had many accidents that caused significant problems?
I mean, no? I mean, that's kind of a, I mean, it's a little bit of an open-ended question, so-
I know it is.
The, I mean, I'd say the short answer is no.
Yeah, significant problems.
No.
And the last thing is, is there, and I don't know if you've done a study on this, but does, put in the compressor, you know, the building and everything there, does that have any effect on the value of, of the homes and the property owners in that area?
So there's, there's been several studies that have been conducted over the years. We have one that's posted to our website right now, that shows there's no correlation between property values that, for, for homes, businesses, other, other structures near or around compressor stations.
Okay. Okay.
Let me get to one issue that everybody brought up, and we haven't talked about yet. So it's the blowdown?
Mm-hmm.
So can you explain it, and what the consequences of it are? Does it put in something immediately into the atmosphere? Is it, you know, explain to me the process and what happens during that, and how often it happens?
Sure, so, so there's going to be two scenarios where, where we will vent the, the compressor station. The first of which would be a planned venting for maintenance activities. So if we need to remove the gas from, from certain segments of the compressor station, we'll isolate them and control, vent that gas to atmosphere. That, that will go through a, what we call a silencer, and it's like a muffler, to, to reduce noise, and that, that gas will be vented to atmosphere. Natural gas is lighter than air, so it will disperse immediately.
Are you under regulation for how much volume you can vent?
Uh, so, so we do report our volumes to the New Jersey DEP on an annual basis, and we do have a, an, well, we do have an air permit issued from the DEP for Station 327.
And that's allowing for a particular amount and no greater? Is that how that works?
I believe so.
I'm pardoned by ignorance, I just don't know.
No, I, I believe that's accurate, yes, sir.
Right. And you asked a question, whether it was benzene and other things, right, Terry? And I think-
Yeah, with the, I know some of the protesters here have a whole list of things that, that are exposed into the air, and their testimony would be quite different from what your testimony is. They'll, they can answer what's, what the chemicals are coming out, they can answer that. Unfortunately, you can't, at least not tonight, to be honest with you.
Well, I mean, so, so again, there's this information here that, that's available on, on our website, it's also available as part of the FERC's Environmental Impact Statement that has constituent levels and, and estimated volumes of VOCs, NOCs, PM two-point-five, sulfur, CO2 equivalents, all, all that is available as part of the public record.
Mm-hmm. It's healthy to breathe that stuff in? I'm sure it's not, no? Does any, anybody complain? Let me ask you this, the other blow-off places you have there, neighbors complain about that, and can't count odors coming, emitting from that? I've heard those stories as well. You wouldn't know of any, right?
And I'm sorry, I don't-
Any kind of complaints about the compressor stations that you have now? Any kind of like odors or noise complaints?
Well, I mean, we've, we've, Tennessee Gas has been around a while, we've operated in our communities for, for a long time, so, so naturally, we have constructive relationships with our immediate neighbors. Sometimes they will say positive things to us, sometimes they'll say negative, but we, we like to keep a close working relationship with them and resolve any issues they might have.
Sort of like up on the mountain in West Milford with the trees, the soil with the water? You know, you resolve that, you resolve that from paying the fine, which is really a drop in the bucket for, for you guys. It's just easier to just pay.
So, so, so there's a couple of things associated with that. We also, we also restored all of the areas to pre-construction conditions, those were signed off and accepted by our regulating agencies. There, there was also a number of conditions during that, I think a couple of which were a few tropical systems and, and some heavy rain events that came through during that time. So, I, I mean, it's not, it's not just about a fine, we also completed the, completed the work to restore those areas to pre-construction conditions.
I've heard different stories about that, but I'm, I'm not here to argue with you, no.
Commissioner, I worked up there, and when it did rain that one time, and that's where I think they got their fine, there was a lot of rain that water, and the dirt did come, the soil did come through, that came down, walked the track.
Right, because the steep, the steep, but the trees weren't done, done-
And then, and then we fixed that over, over time, and we repaired it, because you wouldn't hear the end of it. So, and we took care of that. So I think, I don't know about the fine, I don't get involved in that, but I know we repaired that.
It's pristine the way these guys, is it? I haven't been up there, but I guess I'd take your word for it. It's unfortunate, you gotta find a company that says what they're gonna do and they don't do it and you have to go seek relief somewhere else. That's one of my concerns. Well, it happened because they didn't do the right thing in the beginning, from what I understand. That's what I understand. I was up there too, like years and years ago. But my concern is really the environment. God forbid, there's a mishap. You know, all the monies in the world are not gonna save the water. How are you gonna, you know, we're dealing with water. Five million people drink out of that water. And my chore is to make sure whatever happens here gets done. You know, we don't really have the authority to stop this. Let's be honest with us. You know, we know that. But we, you know, some of our neighbors are reaching out for us to say, hey, let's go slowly on this. We're dealing with a company that didn't do the right thing in the beginning and now they want to get even more sensitive towards the waters. You know, I'm concerned and rightfully so. I'm concerned about, I live up there, not far from there at all. And the neighbors that I represent up there. And if I didn't, I shouldn't be sitting here. You know, you gotta understand that. So, that's where I'm coming from.
I have a question for the engineer. Actually, I have two questions. Let me rephrase that. I have two paragraphs that I received through many of the folks who sent me loads of emails. But I want, I want an answer to, I would like an answer to both paragraphs. I'll read the first one and I'll ask you to respond. This is from a resident. "The site of the compressor is in the middle of the Highlands Preserve, right next to a C1 stream and above the Wanacue and Monksville reservoir. A leak or an accident will be detrimental to the critical drinking water and to nearby communities." My first question to that paragraph is, has there been any objection from the North Jersey District Water Supply, which has oversight of the Monksville and the Wanacue reservoir?
There has not, to my knowledge.
And they're aware, obviously, they're aware of the, this project?
They are.
Okay. The second paragraph that I'm going to read for you is this. "The compressor facilities release harmful pollutants such as NOx, PM 2.1, 2.5, I'm sorry, SOx, VOCs, HAPs such as formaldehyde, benzene, and GHGs. Benzene can cause headaches, asthma attacks, and worsened symptoms for people with respiratory problems. Chromium, benzene, and hydrocarbons can get into industrial stormwater runoff that will increase pollution and flooding." Is there any accuracy to that paragraph?
So similar to what Commissioner Duffy was asking, there are potential emissions at the station as estimated through blowdowns or venting or operation of the emergency generator. It has been found by FERC in their environmental impact statement that these do not have negative impacts to the surrounding area.
And I've read in some of the information that was provided, the gas that goes through these pipelines is a term for it, refined, cleaned, something. It's not, before it goes into the pipeline, it gets processed.
Yeah, the gas that we transport, we refer to it as pipeline quality gas, but the way to think about it is it's been processed and/or refined prior to entering our pipeline network. It has, it has trace amounts of those. We have eliminated as much as practical as possible.
Can anybody else have any questions?
Just a couple of questions to follow up and sort of sharpen my understanding of some of these issues. And first of all, you know, I want to begin by echoing what Chris had to say about, you know, my beliefs about labor and the relationship between labor and government. One of the most worrisome things I heard, Daniel, was actually your comment that sustainable technology companies don't seem interested in working with organized labor. That I find deeply troubling. And if there's anything I can do to improve that circumstance, I'd like to be able to do that because there, so much of our debate is driven by this idea that there's economic development over here and there's environmental protection over here and they necessarily move in opposite directions. I don't believe that's true. I don't think the promise of sustainable technologies make that true. But I also think it's very important that when we're doing this kind of work, that we be doing it with the skilled people of organized labor, you know, doing that work. You know, if we're gonna build pipeline, I don't know, there's no pipelines in wind. But conceptually, you know, what we're building, you know, should benefit from skilled organized labor. And I hope, I mean, you and I have known each other for 20 years. I hope we can follow up on that conversation.
There's not enough time tonight to go through all of the troubles that all of the building president and manager have to pay for renewable energy developers. So it may go. And believe it or not, some of the biggest losses that we have seen come from administration. And that's just, we're now there, but we're happy to follow up with you on any of that.
I'd like to do that. You and I have known each other for many years and I hope we can. But I wanted to ask some specific questions of the company, just following up. First of all, your comment at the beginning was that you're building, anticipating demand 20 or 25 years from the future. What are the assumptions that you're making in terms of that demand vis a vis the evolution of green energy as a policy of the federal government and of many state governments? In other words, are you envisioning, you know, current demand increases, Paris demand increases, Glasgow demand increases?
All of the above, actually, actually, all of the above. And, you know, there are, if you look at the Energy Information Administration, which is the federal government's nonpartisan, staff-driven determination of where natural gas is going to be, it's going to be a major, major source of energy for the next 40 years, under every determination and estimation. Renewables will continue to grow in necessity and commercial viability, affordability. There are obviously a lot of government programs that are going to incentivize that, that will assist. And I think what you're going to see is the, we think what you're going to see is the assets that exist. And that's why I started out the presentation, is the, we're not talking about building new pipelines. And in response to a couple of the comments about older pipes, we replace a lot of that pipe. So it's not a 70-year-old pipe from the Gulf to New England. Hundreds and hundreds of miles of those pipes, a lot more probably, have been replaced over the years. We also have a cathodic protection system in place that avoids corrosion on the pipe. So it's not a pipe that's been sitting in the ground for 70 years, rusting away. So all of these systems are in place, but we do replace. We have thousands of integrity digs, we call them, going on on a yearly basis, digging up, replacing pipe, and a whole host of other things to make sure our pipes stay safe in operation. But there will be, we certainly recognize, as a company, we're part of the renewable future that we see in the country. We have a renewable ventures group in our own company. We've acquired renewable natural gas entities and other companies because we think that's going to be a big part. We're part of renewable diesel in California. We're part of all of that. So, but we're the large, and any day of the week, 40% of the natural gas in the country goes through our pipes. So we know through our existing pipeline and incremental increases. You know, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, the unions certainly know this, there were pipelines that were built thousands of miles long, across seven, eight states. You don't see that anymore. You see incremental changes, incremental increases for specific purposes and needs. And that's what this project is. And that's where we see what we're doing over the future, utilizing our existing asset base, making sure it's in good working condition, but expanding it for specific customer needs, which, at the end of the day, is not China. It's homes and businesses in the United States.
Thank you, that's, I appreciate the framing there. And for purpose of talking about pipelines, for my next couple of questions, I'm just talking about the pipeline in Passaic County. I'm parochial that way. And so that's what I'm asking you about. You mentioned integrity digs. When was the last integrity dig of any of the pipeline in West Milford?
I'll have to look that up and get back to you with the commissioner. I'm happy to do so. I don't know at this moment.
That would be great. You indicated that the second line that was added about eight or 10 years ago was to reduce associated environmental impacts. What were those impacts and how was it determined that the second pipeline was needed to reduce them?
Well, so a little bit of context, sorry, a little bit of context about my answer. A lot of the times when we develop new assets, we look to locate them near existing, existing infrastructure, things that have been disturbed previously. We can utilize the previously disturbed areas as workspace, as travel lanes for equipment. So when we look to, you know, locate new infrastructure, whether it's the compressor station that's immediately adjacent to the pipelines there in Passaic County or West Milford, or new pipelines, not associated with this project, for example. But if we can locate them near other assets, it reduces impacts of traveling through not previously developed property, virgin forests, you know, virgin land, things that haven't previously developed. So by locating adjacent, it minimizes impacts to the new development.
Okay, so when you say the second line was added to reduce associated environmental impacts, you're just saying, we put it right next to the first one so that we could drive our trucks on the same roads? There wasn't, there wasn't some identified need based upon emissions or other measurements or your integrity testing of the 70-year-old pipeline that made you say, you know what?
So I understand a little better now, I apologize. So, the new pipeline was installed a decade ago for discreet customer need. As Alan mentioned earlier, our projects are built for discreet need from our customers based on long-term contracts, long-term need. So the new pipeline was built for new capacity for customer need. It was located adjacent to an existing pipeline to reduce impacts during construction.
I see. So it wasn't, it wasn't put into West Milford 10 years ago because there was some problem that needed to be fixed?
No, sir.
With the existing pipeline in West Milford?
That's right.
Thank you for that clarification. You twice used the exact same turn of phrase when you stated that after the compressor statement, station is built, gas will be passing through the 70-year-old pipeline at the same pressures it's allowed to operate at today. So I'm gonna take you into a discussion between allowed and actual. What's the actual pressure at which gas travels through our pipeline on a typical day at this time?
So, I'm gonna use some general terms here, somewhere around 800 to 900 PSI, pounds per square inch.
Okay. And what is the, what's the pressure at which that pipeline is allowed to operate today?
Somewhere above 900, I think somewhere around 935 to 950 pounds per square inch.
After the compressor state, station is completed, what will the typical day's PSI be in that pipe? Right now, it's 800 to 900, what will it be on a typical day?
So within that same range, but probably more 850 to 900, 860 to 900. I'd have to go back and consult the hydraulic model that's prepared, but it stays below that maximum operating pressure, but at a higher range from what it's historically operated.
How was that operating pressure determined?
So it's determined by FEMA and the Code of Federal Regulations for operating pressure and certain class locations, population densities, general areas. But it is determined by the thickness of the pipe, the strength of the steel, the size of the pipe, and a factor of safety. And the factor of safety is set forth by the federal regulations based on geographic location, population density, things of that nature.
I assume this isn't the first compressor station that you're building? So, has it been your company's experience when increasing the pressure in an old pipe by about 5 to 10% as a result of a compressor station upgrade or construction and bringing you that 5 to 10% closer to that maximum rating? Has the company experienced circumstances where the result of that was any kind of pipeline failure? You know, significant increase in admission, in emissions? Any, any, any sequelae of similar 10% or so pressure increase that's bringing you close to that rating in prior projects elsewhere in the United States?
So I think the way to think about that is, when Alan mentioned our integrity management plan and going out there and inspecting lines and digging them up and performing maintenance or replacing them, when we perform our integrity assessments and our testing assessments, we test these pipes to what they could operate at, not what they do operate at. So when we perform our integrity assessments, we assess them for the maximum allowable operating pressure, not what they operate at. So we're confident that as this pressure profile increases slightly within its allowable range, it's within the safe operating parameters as established by our regulations.
Okay, so I want to be sure I understood that answer. When you do an integrity test of a pipeline that's rated to 935 PSI, you take that pipeline up to 935 PSI?
We actually take it above, above that rate.
Okay. And when's the last time you did that with our pipeline in West Milford?
I'll have to look it up and get back to you. I don't have that number or date exactly.
I'd appreciate a follow-up on the question of integrity digs and testing of the pipeline. Because as I'm sure you've heard, it's age and the idea of running more gas through it is a big part of the environmental concern that is being expressed to us by our constituents. And I want to thank the 600 or so that went on somebody's website that addressed everything to me as Dear Esquire. I got them and, and read them. I have no further questions.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just have a couple and I think they're relatively easy questions. Do you presently supply gas to West Milford? The residents of West Milford?
We do have a measurement delivery station in the township of West Milford.
You do?
And that delivers to the local utility.
So what is the benefit of this compressor station and the work you're doing to the people that live in West Milford? Is there a benefit to them specifically?
From, from a, from a natural gas perspective?
Any perspective. I mean, I know you'd be paying taxes, I know that. I think that the people that you see here today are concerned, like, how does it benefit them? They are absolutely concerned about the environmental circumstances of having work done up there with the compressor. And how is it worthwhile to them to have this compressor built in their home, by their homes?
I'll take that. And we do get asked that, whenever we build anything. What are the impacts? Why, why is this important to the region that we're actually doing the construction in? And of course, there are jobs, absolutely. There are tax benefits. The economics, I think we've all talked about those and those are an important part of it. But the biggest impact, both short and long term, for anything we build anywhere is the supply. And the enhanced access to natural gas supply all across the country. When we have spikes in energy demand, and we're seeing them more and more often with historic weather events across the country, even in states like Texas, having issues with energy supply. Additional supply, and in this pipe is additional supply. We're gonna be transporting more natural gas. The access to that additional supply is the long-term benefit of wherever that asset is, in this case, West Milford, and the enhanced access, the additional natural gas. That's the long, well, short and long-term benefit to the citizens of Passaic County.
Okay, and what are the drawback, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Actually, I'm sorry, if I may, I actually met a member in West Milford who is 825, who works in New York. And the company that he works for will directly benefit from having more reliable natural gas up in New York. So his job as an 825 member and as a resident of West Milford will be directly impacted by whether or not his company can rely on, you know, efficient and achieve everything. So you do have somebody who lives in the town and who is going to, you know, have consequences for his job over there in New York.
I'm just hoping that, I guess, the positives outweigh the negatives of building compressor station there. And I guess that's what I'm getting at.
And also add, Commissioner, that it's not just us that make this determination to you. I mean, part of the federal review process, the Federal Integr regulatory Commission, which is a rigorous process, is to look at the need for this project. And the actual certificate that they issue after they do this lengthy review is a certificate of public convenience and necessity. They're making a determination, is this, they look at the pipeline grid generally, not just Tennessee Gas, but the larger grid, is this necessary? And they make that determination. And ultimately, that's whether this project goes forward or not. The Federal Integr regulatory Commission makes the decision. So we make the case and we think we're doing that, but they ultimately make the decision. But it is, again, the need for the project in the larger public interest.
And do they weigh in the environmental impact?
Absolutely, yeah. A comprehensive environmental impact statement is part of that.
Okay, thank you.
So, so the FERC has issued the final environmental impact statement. They did that, I think, a month or two ago. And it's currently in its final review processes with FERC staff. So, so, so within the next 90 days, we're hopeful to receive a certificate, a federal certificate from the FERC sometime by the end of the year, maybe in January. But TBD.
The Highlands Commission, wasn't it approved by the Highlands Commission? Isn't there...
We don't get approved, we just approve stuff like that.
I don't know. Pardon me?
Reviewed.
Reviewed, but we didn't vote on it. You didn't vote on it. I was just reading some, you know, it was something that we read in the paper, that, you know, the commissioners were going to...
We don't stay commerce like that, and it's actually, we don't really get a say in BP like, but we don't.
Right. And I think it was approved by the DEP, New Jersey, maybe?
I believe so.
No, I'm just...
It never came before us, it may go before our staff.
Right.
But they look for compliance, and if there's compliance, we don't get to vote on it, it's not a vote on it.
Right.
It's accepted.
Mm-hmm. Okay, all right, thanks.
This is for the engineer. You mentioned a couple times about planned and unplanned emissions, the planned is part of what, maintenance, operation?
That's correct.
And when you have a planned, well, how often do you do that in the course of a year?
It's a regular, but, you know, between one and three times, one and four times.
Three times a year would be the planned ones?
Yeah.
And do you notify the regulatory agencies that this is taking place before it happens?
We do. So not only will we notify our regulatory agencies, we'll also notify, you know, local officials, town, you know, first responders to let them know that that activity is going to take place.
I'm glad you brought that up. Did you have conversations, obviously, with the officials in West Milford? Did you have conversations with the fire department in West Milford?
We did.
Did they raise any issues regarding this project?
No, we had very collaborative discussions with the first responders out of West Milford, talking about, you know, the facility, how it would respond, how we would coordinate and interact, provide training to them, you know, brief them on the facility and how to, you know, coordinate with us to respond to events at the station.
So, the fire department was okay, accepted your, and there was no objection to the project?
That's correct. And we've entered into an agreement with the town of West Milford. A couple of those conditions do relate to providing some equipment to the fire department and first responders to help support their response to...
They did ask for some, they did ask for some...
They did.
Changes, okay. And you complied?
We did.
Okay. And I guess the police department have any issues?
They did not.
First aid squad?
I'm not sure we talked to the first aid squad. That would be a new one for me.
Just going down the list of emergency personnel, emergency services?
So, we met with the Office of Emergency Management, the fire department, the town of West Milford, and the police.
Have you had the opportunity to speak to the residents of West Milford, sort of like a town hall or whatever?
So, we've held two virtual, I'll call them town hall meetings. One was just a project presentation that delivered information, you know, via Zoom or via virtual. The second one was another presentation with the opportunity for back and forth question and answer with persons from West Milford in the area. I think there's approximately maybe 50 or 75 persons that called in and were asking questions of us about that facility.
So you have reached out to the residents and gave them an opportunity to ask their questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
For the engineer, the planned releases, how long do they last, what's the duration?
So, they are short in duration. They are less than three minutes in length. Most of the time, they're actually shorter than that, but no longer than that.
Thank you. No questions, we're good? All right, back to you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Director, if I could suggest, since I know there are a lot of people that want to be heard on this issue, that we'll forego the COVID-19 update, there's nothing new to report other than new numbers, but we will post that on our website for your convenience, if that's okay, or for public's convenience, if that's okay with you. That would conclude my...
Director, okay. Just with that, though, I would like to provide information regarding the booster shot, where they're available, and also, I would, just so we can have that information, that everyone can hear. We don't need to do the full presentation, but back to the booster shot.
Want to do that now?
Yeah, unfortunately, because of the crowd side that we had here, Commissioner, we sent the health people home, but all of that information is on our website, all right? PassaicCountyNJ.org.
Okay. At this time, we're, I'm sorry?
Director, can we take a five-minute recess? I know you want to go home, but you know...
No, no, it's not that I want to go home, but I know what happens in situations like this, five turns into 10.
They all want to go home.
But I'm taking a five-minute recess, I'll be back in a minute.
All right, we'll take a five-minute recess, but in five minutes, 7:05, we're going to start up again.
I have no place to go.
All right, we're going to go outside the norm here. We're going to open it up to the public, because so many of you here. I ask you just a couple of things, folks. Number one, you'll see a green light and a red light. When the red light comes on, please conclude your comments. Also, to remind you that all comments that you make are a matter of public record. I ask everyone in the audience to be respectful and listen to the speaker as they talk during the public portion. And that's pretty much it. At this time, I'll take a motion to open the floor to the public.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bartlet, roll call.
County Commissioners, after.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lozera.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director LaFour.
Yes. Okay, anybody wishing to be heard, please step forward, state your name and address. And remember, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Jeff Rappaport, I live in Wayne, New Jersey. I've been concerned, and spoke to you before, about natural gas. The problem isn't so much the pipelines, though they're part of it, nor the company. Problem's natural gas itself. You have to be reading in the papers, huge amounts of methane that are going into the atmosphere. This is suicide. It comes from the actual mining of the natural gas. And it comes from mines, wells that have been closed, that they don't want to, the industry doesn't want to close. President Obama said natural gas is clean a form of energy. That's true, is it burns, but it's not true necessarily in the whole process, because of the methane, the huge amounts of methane that are going into the air, that are becoming very, that are incredibly problematical, much more, much so than I thought. All right, well, this has been, this has been my point of view, and we've presented this to you. I hear 40 jobs, 40 jobs. Now, one job, coming from a union family, I understand that. I watched my mother cry when Eisenhower won the election in 1952, and she cried her heart out after all those years of Democratic rule, or whatever you want to call it. However, when I look at the jobs, I just went to a seminar that had, on ocean management, Bureau of Ocean Energy Management. They're building the windmills off the coast of New Jersey. Initially, we're going to have 3,000 jobs. I listened to this seminar, there were 200 people there. I would say a good quarter of the presenters were carpenters' union, or electricians, every union that spoke supported it. This is a huge infusion of jobs in clean energy. To try to make this, the importance of this, it could be the difference between whether our grandchildren have an earth or don't have an earth. The earth will be here, but the question is, is it going to be here for us? You can go to bat now, and you can support clean energy, or you can throw softball pitches to your friends. I really hope you put this thing to a vote and bring it out in the open. Thank you very much.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Linda Boniface, and I am here tonight on behalf of Heavy and General Construction Laborers Local 472, as well as the 446 laborers who live in Passaic County. I am here to support the Tennessee Gas Pipeline East 300 Upgrade Project. This project will ensure future stable energy supply to New York and our region. It will have minimal environmental impact, be built to the utmost standards of safety. Our members have extensive training and experience in building this and all types of energy infrastructure. It will generate over 40 construction jobs and generate additional tax revenue for West Milford of 650,000. Being an elected official in a township in Bergen County, I wish I could get 650,000 additional tax revenue. We urge you to support this project. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Commission. My name is Matt Smith. I'm the New Jersey State Director for Food and Water Watch, speaking on behalf of our 3,500 members in Passaic County, also with, on behalf of my parents who live in Ringwood. So, I wanted to respond to a couple of the pieces of misinformation that were given, or lack of information given at tonight's presentation that we saw. First of all, I was deeply disappointed that there were no mentions of climate change. First of all, I was deeply disappointed that there were no mentions of climate change, not from a single Commissioner. Here we are, in the wake of Superstorm Ida, devastating New Jersey families, homes, people's lives lost, right here in Passaic County. Yet, we're not concerned about the climate impacts from expanding fossil fuel infrastructure in 2021. This pipeline alone would produce 2.2 million metric tons of CO2 equivalent annually. That is, that is larger than any single emitter in the state of New Jersey currently, larger than the Bayway refinery, in terms of its global warming impact. And that's coming from the methane, which converted to a CO2 equivalent, is 86 times more potent than carbon dioxide at warming the atmosphere over the 20-year timeframe, which is the critical timeframe we have to reduce emissions, to avoid ITAs happening more frequently, more ferociously. Furthermore, New Jersey and New York State have both, as well as our federal government, have set paths to transition off of fossil fuels and onto clean renewable energy. No one is saying that we are in a position to shut down all of the gas infrastructure that we have in our region today, but the idea that we would invest in building new stuff that would run for, what, 70, perhaps up to 70 more years, like this current pipeline, is insanity. What are we leaving behind for our kids and grandkids? A planet where you can't, you got a living, where every single year, there's, there's ITAS. That's the future that we are debating here tonight, around the discussion of new fossil fuel infrastructure. When we talk about Tennessee Gas Pipeline Safety Record and Kinder Morgan Safety Record, they've been fined since, between 2006 and 2017, $89 million. When you do a quick Google search of Kinder Morgan Pipeline incidents, the first three results are Kinder Morgan Pipeline Explosion Kills Two People in Arizona, that's from August of this year, Kinder Morgan Pipeline Spills Up To 42,000 Gallons of Gasoline Into Walnut Creek, and Kinder Morgan Gas Pipeline Explosion Kills Two in Illinois, all from this year. These are the first three results on Google. We don't need this gas. New York State has set to phase out all gas by 2040. This gas isn't even for New Jersey, it's all for New York. Some idea that mystically, we're gonna benefit from the increased supply that's already contracted for by utilities in New York State, is a falsity. We need to stand up for our environment, our health, our future, and take a stand for Passaic County's needs, not the profit motives of a multi-billion dollar corporation. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ken Dolsky. I sent you a letter two days ago with two points. So, it's two things that I want you to take away, Winfield Drive in Parsippany. Two points that I want you to take away tonight. The first is, this project is not needed. It's not, the only person, the only entity that needs this project is TGP. They're gonna send gas to New York, so that people can install, can build homes and offices, and install gas furnaces and gas burning appliances. None of those are necessary, because they don't need gas. Electric, you know, ground source heat pumps, and electric ovens, and electric range tops, electric hot water heaters, or solar hot water heaters, are plenty sufficient. Ground source heat pumps work fine. You don't, you do not need gas. So, there's no need for this gas, nobody's gonna be harmed by it not being around. That's number one. The second point, and you may get tired of us saying this, but when you look at climate change, you have to understand, methane is the, one of the worst climate change gases that exists, because one molecule of methane, which is a major component of natural gas, will trap 86 times more heat than a molecule of CO2. So, when you want to fight climate change, and you want to try to stop the global warming, you must reduce methane. You cannot do that by building more sources of methane leaks and methane emissions in the environment. It's very simple, we have to reduce the amount of methane that we're living with, or we're gonna boil ourselves to death. This project is just gonna be another nail in the coffin for our planet, along with many, many other bad projects, but here's one that you have a chance to stop. Everybody needs to step up and do their part, every individual, every county, every municipality, the states, and the national government, all need to do their part. Your part is to stop this project as best you can, right here in Passaic County. Thank you.
Hey, folks, folks, let's, let's be respectful here.
Good evening. My name is Danny Pizzone. I'm a member of Laborers Local 472. I work in construction on energy projects. I'm here tonight to support the East 300 Upgrade Project. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you, brothers and sisters, for coming out for your support.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Carl Steele. I live in West Milford, New Jersey, 23 Gifford Road. So, why are we here this evening, discussing why residents of West Milford are opposing the compressor station that is possibly going to be built by the Tennessee Gas Pipeline? For environmental reasons, New York refused TGP a permit to supply gas to approximately 400,000 residents in Westchester County, I believe that was a year or two ago. Their only alternative was to run the frac gas through the 65-year-old pipeline, which is in West Milford. On October 28th, full article here, in the New York Times, this year Governor Kathy Hochul of New York, supported the New York State Environmental Regulation, which refused two companies to upgrade their gas fuel power plants. That's only 12 days ago. Emissions of methane, which is produced by oil, gas, and frac gas operations, can warm the atmosphere by 80 times as fast as carbon dioxide. Gas fueled plants are no longer considered a so-called "bridge to the future," but the new bridge is now, is now dominated by wind, solar, and this is why the New York State regulators refused the gas companies a permit. For public record, you've heard it before, our, we have solar, $7.41 is our monthly bill. I'm glad to pay that. According to a new report in the 2020, from the University of California, Berkeley, the U.S. has enough gas plants to support a transition to a far cleaner energy source, solar, wind, geothermal battery storage. Very little is mentioned by the media, but electric companies are planning to build 235 polluting gas-fired stations across America. Twenty-six proposed plants are already under construction. Last week, at the COP26 Summit in Glasgow, Scotland, 105 countries have signed on to the Global Methane Pledge. We are simply asking the Passaic County Commissioners to vote no, and not allow the compressor station to be built in West Milford. Recently, I heard a climate scientist that I have a lot of respect for, Katherine Hayhoe. This reminds us that, quote, "Scientists are the physicians of our planet." We urgently need to listen to our physicians. And by the way, my one son-in-law is a union carpenter, my other son-in-law, before he was deceased, was a union electrician. I'm very, very sensitive to jobs and to unions, period. Thanks for your time.
Good evening, Passaic County Commissioners. I'm Melissa Brown Blower. I'm from West Milford, New Jersey. I'm in my, going on my seventh year on the Economic Development Commission up there, where we are very earnestly trying to build a travel, tourism, and recreation future for our town. I've, from the very beginning, heard of this compressor station, felt that it was a direct threat to everything we are trying to achieve, and to the property values of people like me who live within a mile of this. It is right on Monssel Reservoir, I am right by, nearby on Greenwood Lake, which is a huge revenue generator and a huge source of economic prosperity for West Milford, because people are buying homes along there and turning them into Airbnbs, and people are renting them, and people are coming to West Milford and coming to Greenwood Lake, and that is a huge source of revenue in our future. We are also building out our trails in tourism, and we are putting up a website, and we were doing all kinds of things. When this came in through the side door, it is a direct threat to us. The federal government just passed a $1.2 trillion, I hope that number's, I think it might be low, infrastructure bill, that is going to invest in green energy, and it's gonna ripple all throughout the United States, but also New Jersey, and it's going to invest in building infrastructure under the roads, the tunnel into New York City, investing in improving people's, the insulation in their homes, as well as solar and wind power, and there are going to be a ton of new jobs for working people. The Democratic Party has always been the champion of working people, that is who they represent, that is their base, and the unions are a huge part of that. We care more, and we, we never turn a cold shoulder to anybody. It is really important to recognize who your friends are, and to stand with them, and to realize that we're, you know, the green jobs are gonna be there, and they're gonna be there for the unions. That is a really important point to make. Climate change, again, was not mentioned in any of the discussions tonight, but it is the big elephant in the room, and it is costing our public and our public treasuries trillions of dollars, it's going to, over the next 20, 30, 40 years, rescuing people from disasters, and moving people inshore, protecting people from floods. These costs are all externalized. The internalized cost, the internalized profits right now are to Kinder Morgan and to Tennessee Gas, and to the short-term 40 jobs that may last for a year or two, but in the long term, the greatest costs of all are the costs to us, and our children, and our children's children, and to the future of the planet, and our country, and our world, and we all need to be caring about that a great deal, and we need to think about that right now. And when we take a stand, yes, you guys cannot stop this, the governor can stop this, the DEP can stop this, FERC can stop this, and right now, all of the leaders who are behind those agencies are telling everybody that they stand for green energy, and they stand for a future of peace and prosperity from the bottom up, stability, common sense, and civility, and I think we all need to take a stand now and speak to that, and demand that our leaders stand on the right side of history, and stand for peaceful future, green future, jobs from the bottom up for everybody, and make sure that everybody's taken care of. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sam DeFalco, and I'm also with Food and Water Watch. Thanks for the opportunity to speak this evening. Asking that the Commission reconsider the resolution opposing this project, and call, please call on Governor Murphy to stop this. We have to stop digging ourselves into a deeper climate crisis, and one thing that we need to do is stop new fossil fuel projects. We don't need to debate if the risks of this project outweighs its need, because this project is simply not needed. The so-called East 300 Upgrade is to benefit the profits of Kinder Morgan and the private corporation Con Edison, who was slated to purchase the additional gas from this project for distribution in Westchester County, New York. At the same time, New York's climate protection law prioritizes the use of heat pumps and electricity for home and business heating and cooking. TGP is also not being honest to residents about the risks of this project. We already know TGP's track record in Passaic County, and elsewhere in New Jer, in North Jersey. We cannot trust them to safely operate a dangerous gas compressor, in this ecologically sensitive Highlands region so close to residents' home, and the water supply of over 3.5 million residents. Please think of the substantial damage TGP caused a decade ago when expanding their pipeline system. There was significant damage to Lake Look Over and Beaufort Waters, which increased flooding and impacted drinking water wells. Residents at Lake Look Over have reported at least nine, or, sorry, at least four incidents where they needed to evacuate their homes because too much pressure had built up in the pipes. And for those living near the compressor in Wantage, they've told me that they've had to leave their neighborhood during blowdowns because of the toxic fumes that have took over their homes. And residents have also been told by the gas company that if they smell gas, they can't use their phone, they shouldn't start their car, and how can you call for help if you can't do either of those things? These incidents are not one-offs, but they're very consistent with TGP's track record. According to the Pipeline and Hazardous Material Safety Administration's failure reports, in the last 15 years, TGP had 111 significant incidents with their pipelines, which resulted in 19 federal enforcement actions, and nearly $90 million in property damage. We cannot trust TGP to build these compressors so close to residents. I also want to name that the movement of concerned residents opposed to this compressor station is only growing. Over 2,000 people have already signed petitions. Seven municipalities have passed resolutions, as well as the summer cassette county commissioners. And just last week, over 70 healthcare professionals sent a letter to Governor Murphy, urging him to stop this project because of the harm it would bring to the health of communities surrounding the compressor station. The future is in good-paying union jobs in renewable technologies that will protect our future, not climate-destroying fracked gas. So, please protect our health and environment by passing a resolution against this project at your next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Ted Glick. I live in Bloomfield, New Jersey. I'm the president of 350, the climate group 350 New Jersey, Rockland. I wanted to first talk about Roseland, though. I also was a coordinator for a number of years of efforts to try to prevent, unfortunately, we were unsuccessful, to prevent the building and then the expansion of a gas compressor station in Roseland. One of the things that happened when they were in the process of putting that compressor station in, was that one day, they, they had a planned blowdown, right? They're putting in a new pipeline, a bigger pipeline, you know, leading to this compressor that was being built. It was a planned blowdown, and they miscalculated. It turns out that it was a bad day for this blowdown. There was a lot of, a whole weather system, so that when, when they released the gas that was in the pipeline to put in a new one, the gas just went out for about a mile in every direction, or whichever way the winds were blowing. And unfortunately, that day, the winds were blowing to the elementary school of Roseland, the Noecker Elementary School. All of a sudden, everybody in that school starts smelling gas, and they panicked, and there's a panicked evacuation. From that day onward, every single member of the Roseland government, whether Republican or Democrat, was against what was being done to them, was against the expansion that further came. That's an example of what can happen with a compressor station. That's number one. The question was raised about FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. I've been active for about nine years, working with groups, trying to prevent the imposition of these kinds of projects on the communities. And FERC is, FERC has a history as being a rubber stamp agency for these projects. And to give a specific reason why they have that reputation, Jamie Raskin, Congressman Jamie Raskin from Maryland, convened a hearing, did research into FERC's role, FERC's track record, in terms of when new proposals from the gas industry for expansion come to them, what does FERC do? What's its track record in terms of approving or rejecting them? What he found, this was about a year ago, the, I think, the House Committee on Oversight and Reform, I believe that's the name of it, what they found was that over a 20-year period, there were 1,021 applications for new pipelines, compressor stations, expansion of the gas industry, only six were turned down, out of 1,021. The guy here from Kinder Morgan talked as if FERC did this great job of really looking at every aspect of all the, the whole gas, the infrastructure reality in the country. It doesn't. It takes one project at a time, it doesn't look at the cumulative impacts of other, other projects that are similar in the same area. So, you're, you're passing this resolution, could impact FERC. You don't have the power over decision-making, but you could have an impact on FERC's decision, believe me. There's some new leadership there, and it could be very helpful, so thank you.
Yeah, way beyond your time, sir. Thank you.
Hello? This is my first time wearing these in public. Some people never get the opportunity to get this old, I need them. My name's Kevin Gutser. I'm a councilman in West Milford, also a union tradesman. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I would like to address the board and communicate the following. First, as a councilman, I would like the Commissioners to know that as a councilman, it is my duty to represent all West Milford residents in a fair manner. I want you to know that I have done that. When West Milford found out about this project, which was solely under FERC's jurisdiction, I spent many hours researching their proposed project. What could and could not be done, and what is the best way to ensure, should this project receive approval from FERC, that is in the best possible oversight and protection for our residents, would be done. our residents, would be done. No township says, "Come to our town." However, after reviewing the facts, the fact that the approvals for this project are under jurisdiction of FERC, it is imperative to have an open dialogue and assurance to ensure public safety. The best way to establish was to craft an agreement with TGP and signal to them that we, as a township, have certain expectations should approval be granted for their federal government, also known as FERC. Second, this project will be all union workers, a third of which will be from West Milford. I understand the public concerns and I respect public concern, but want you to know that we have done everything within our power to balance the public concern, the public safety, and to ensure the best possible outcome. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Dave Morrison. I'm going to echo a lot of what Kevin said. I'm also a councilman in West Milford. And thank you. You guys are asking the right questions. You are. So basically, when we had people expressing their concerns about the environmental impact, I was given an article by Dr. Hendricks. It was about the natural gas pipeline, compressor stations, and VOC emissions and mortality rates. And I was like, wow, VOC emissions. I'm thinking of methane. Everybody talks about methane. What about these VOCs? You asked that as well. That's an excellent question. So being, being that I actually have a degree in science, I came out of the environmental science program at Rutgers. I'm actually a medical physicist by day, but I have background in science. I'm not a great politician, but I'm a decent scientist. I want to take, I decided I'm going to talk to the author. Because if I say what the article means, it doesn't mean anything. But if I talk to the author and ask his impression of what, what the risk is, that means something. So I looked at it as, we got to balance it. We got, we got people's needs and we have needs of the town, ratables and one thing. But it's not just about profit. It's like, what's the risk? We drive a car, 11 or 12 of us are going to have a fatal accident for every 100,000, right? So this, right away, this paper was looking, was talking about, about an excess mortality of 1.5 per 100,000. Now, not as good, not as dangerous as cars, but certainly not nothing. Then I started getting into the weeds a little bit. I said, okay, so what about water? You will not, the water is not an issue. You're not going to be able to get these, the, the release of this stuff from blowdowns is not going to get anywhere near concentrations that would be dangerous in the water level. It's just not. I would defy anyone to show me an article that's peer-reviewed that says you're going to have a water issue from a blowdown event from a compressor. It's just not going to happen. What the article was looking at also was Title V, I think it's called Title V, compressors. Now, those are the ones near the fracking fields. Those are the nastiest of the nasty. This compressor in West Milford is not Title V. It's not going to put out anywhere near what this article was that said the risk is one and a half per 100,000. Not Title V, so it's not there. And I said, okay, that's good. Anything else? Well, I looked at his graph. New Jersey was conspicuously, didn't fit on the graph. There was no correlation, zero correlation. Let me say it again, zero correlation with compressor stations and excess mortality risk in this study, which is the only peer-reviewed study we could find. In fact, in this study, which was released July 2, 2020, the author says there's no data that he can find in the literature. So I started looking at, okay, we got to balance this. And I appreciate the activism of the environment. You know, we're right, you're right. We got to change our ways. We got to get off the fossil fuels. But it's the way we do it that's important. What people don't think about, and what I did in my risk assessment in West Milford is say, okay, how's it going to impact everybody? Okay, well, let's say we don't have compressors. What are we going to do? How are we going to get gas around? All right, put them on rails, liquefy them, put them in tankers. That's even more dangerous. What's going to happen to gas prices? I think we're already seeing that now when we shut pipelines down. Prices go up. So do we want grandma having to decide, I'm going to be able to pay, pay my heating bills or I'm going to be able to buy my medicine? I don't think so. So anyway.
Gone beyond. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Anyway, it's just my two cents. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public should be heard?
Anne Schnackenberg, 268 Washington Ave, Clifton, New Jersey. I'd like to say that I agree with the commissioner earlier, who said that just because something's allowed, doesn't mean that it should be. This Tennessee company is planning for the future, they say, not our future. This company exists to serve its customers. We live in Passaic County and the state of New Jersey are not their customers. You're not their customers. Labor's important. But the health of laborers and all people who work is also important. And rest assured, there is no shortage of development and construction projects in the state of New Jersey. Work will continue somewhere. Jobs will be had. Public health and safety is simply more important than making money. Some may not feel that way. And value making money, tax money, West Milford's going to profit, people are going to get wages, shareholders profit. But people in Passaic County have been through enough. We don't need any more public health problems or criseses. You and I aren't getting any younger and neither is that pipe. This commission needs to know that this is bigger than West Milford or Passaic County. It's a state and national and global issue. You may not have the ultimate say, but you have the chance to represent us before the state and federal government and speak on our behalf. People are closely watching how this board addresses this important issue and how much they really care about our health and safety. The site for this compressor is in middle of Highlands, supposed to be protected land, plans to get constructed next to a stream above the Wanacue Reservoir. A leak or accident will be detrimental to critical drinking water and health and safety of nearby communities. This compressor station will pump gas faster and more pressure through very old pipelines, increasing risk of leaks and explosion, explosions, aging infrastructure. Big topic. Aging infrastructure is an important component of this issue and one you need to take very You're dealing with harmful air pollutants, stormwater runoff, increased pollution and flooding. Clearly, this is a lose-lose proposition for the people of Passaic County. Shareholders and corporations profiting from this project will never be adversely affected by it. Never. They don't live here, they don't care, but we do and you should too. You're supposed to act on our behalf, on behalf of taxpaying residents, constituents. You're sworn to serve, not on behalf of corporate special interest groups that will use our Passaic County land, our land, for profit and give us nothing but a future of negative possibilities in exchange for that privilege. This project does not serve this county or this state. It uses us, we get absolutely nothing out of it. You need to do the right thing and protect the Highlands' drinking water supply for 3 million people by opposing TGP's possible compressor station. And this means doing more than just acting as a delivery service for our public comments. You need to stop waffling, stop alienating your base. Be the leaders we expect you to be and take a stand, please.
Okay, you've gone beyond your time. Thank you very much.
Okay. Reintroduce the resolution tonight against this. Thank you. Do the right thing.
I'm Margaret Wood, 324 Germantown Road, West Milford, New Jersey. I don't have a prepared statement tonight because I already gave you all my statements. And if you have forgotten them, then you have a very short memory. And you ought to recall them. Okay, so let me just address some of the comments that were made here today. One comment was that there's 40-man years' worth of work. So what does that equal? Forty men for one year, one man for 40 years. That's one job. That's one lifetime job. I'm sure that one man can find another job somewhere else, especially since we just, we just passed a $1.2 trillion bill on infrastructure. All these people are going to be working. No one's going to be unemployed. Now, the TGP rep changed his story regarding where the gas will go. Because I asked him the question, where it will go, when West Milford had their Zoom meeting. And he said it's going to Con Edison and one other gas company. Now, where does it go after it reaches Con Edison? I asked him that. They don't know. They don't track it after that. So Con Edison and this other gas company, they can sell it anywhere they want. And if you don't think they're going to take advantage of capitalism and sell it to the highest bidder, then you're naive. All these gas pipelines are connected. They can send it anywhere they want. They can send it to a liquefying station where they can ship it overseas. Oh, and by the way, I noticed that when you were grilling him, Mr. Duffy, very good, because it rattled him. And that's what made him change his story, when he said it will not go out of the country. And that's not what he said when he spoke in West Milford. And a court of law, when they, when they hear a witness change their testimony, that's usually an indication of hiding something. So thank you for rattling him and thank you for making him change his story so that we can all know that he was hiding the fact that they don't know where it goes after it goes to Con Edison and that other company. Okay, they said they were going to level. I'm an aerospace engineer. I have a master's degree in aerospace engineering. It's very similar to structural engineering. So I know what I'm talking about. So I know what ultimate pressure is. Graduated from Polytechnic Institute of New York, very prestigious school. So they said, the pressure right now is not always at ultimate pressure. It goes up and down. Ultimate is the maximum before it's dangerous. And they said, they're, the purpose of the compressor station is to keep it closer to all, ultimate all the time. So it will be closer to maximum all the time, hopefully without exceeding it. Yeah, okay. Ultimate for what? For a brand-new pipeline? Because once a pipeline is corroded, it no longer has the same strength.
Ma'am, you've exceeded your time. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Please, okay. Next one.
My name is Alessia Ramo. I live in Clifton and I have a PhD in environmental engineering. I just wanted to come and record my opposition to this project. So, thank you. Obviously, you've read some of the literature you've received about the threats to the environment. Of course, there are going to be emissions and toxic chemicals released. And in such a sensitive area, we just shouldn't even be talking about it. Drinking water, wetlands, the Highlands are all threatened by this project. And I watched the intro presentation, but everything is short-term. Short-term gains, no impact to the water during construction, no impact to the environment during construction. What happens after that? Where do the jobs go after that? But surely, there will be corporate profits. So I'm asking you to consider the human toll in this project for your constituents. So when I was in fourth grade, I calculated the carbon footprint of my house, which is not a typical project for a fourth grader, but that was 1995. And we put together all the bills for my house and figured out how much carbon dioxide was released from my house in one year. In 1995, we had everything we needed to know that these kinds of projects should not go through. So it's appalling to me that 26 years later, we're still considering them. So I'm asking you to protect your constituency, to look towards the future, to do the best you can with the information you have, which is, there is a very real threat to the environment, a very real threat to public health. Consider how much we know about people getting sick from these types of projects in their backyard. And the weather has only been getting worse and more extreme year after year. New Jersey, Passaic County, is under so much developmental pressure already. And we are already so contaminated from historical activities. So we have to stop already. So these are the kind of decisions that put us in drive or reverse. And you are our representatives to the state and federal governments. So I'm asking you to take a stand in opposition to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
How you doing, commissioners? My name's Henry Laura. This is Drive, West Milford, New Jersey. And I want to express my support for this project just because I know where the land is. I hike around there a lot. And it's not being used and all I see is them trying to make their project run smoother. And we're still using it to this day. So just want to express my support for it. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. John Alvarado from Bloomfield, New Jersey. I do support the project. Proud member of Local 825. Kind of, I'm just a poly sci grad and it's kind of hard to follow some of these counterparts here, but what's the alternative to not doing this project? Solar farms, big footprint? Windmills? You're talking about the wildlife. I'm hearing why they're in opposition, but I'd like also to hear what, what's the alternative? I would be concerned if it was in my backyard, but I can rest assure, for almost 20 years as an operating engineer in Local 825 and working around these other professionals from other trades, they are, we are the best at what we do. And I do appreciate your support for organized labor as well as everyone in the room. But I'm not up here to argue any points that were presented with the, from the opposition. But I can tell you that the gentleman from Kinder Morgan and Tennessee Company, they will have safety, safety guards put in place for, after the construction of the pipeline. And for the existing, they're constantly doing integrity tests as well as upgrades to parts that should be. I mean, it's not, I don't think that 70, 70-year-old pipe is the original in a lot of parts, like the gentleman, who did a fine job, you know, in explaining and support of the pipeline. But it, when it does go, there will be, like I said, the best of the best will be doing the projects and with a lot of safety measures put in place. And when a project is, like the young lady who presented her argument to you, what about after? And it's something that sounds as if it's, they're not going to abandon. You can see, they put a lot of time and energy and they will continue to do so through testing and studying and the integrity of the pipe and monitoring it closely. So I do support it. I appreciate your support, as well as other operating engineers and organized labor in this room. And I do appreciate your time listening to my support of the project. Have a good night and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public?
James DiStefano, 173 Larue Road, Newfoundland, New Jersey. I'm the vice president to roofers, local 10, waterproofers, Patterson, New Jersey, also a lifelong resident of West Milford. I support the pipeline, the economic growth and the sound-building principles. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public?
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close the public portion.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy. Seconded by Commissioner Assad. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Opther Bartlett, Best Duffy, Lazar, Deputy Director James, Director Lepore.
Yes. Moving forward, a couple of things. Obviously, the resolution, resolution involving the opposition to this project would have to be moved and seconded. I need five votes to put it on, to add it to the consent agenda. My suggestion would be to, it will be voted on separately.
Yeah, I wouldn't add it to the consent agenda. I would just view, that's the will, to add it to the agenda and then vote on that as a standalone.
As a standalone, okay. So it will be voted on by itself if, in fact, the commissioners want it a vote tonight. First of all, any comments from the commissioners on this?
Director, I have more questions and they have to do with consequences of not doing this as opposed to doing it. I get the consequences that people believe there's going to be to doing this, but when you're talking about heat pumps and other things that are electricity-driven, most of the energy in this country, that's electricity, is produced by coal and nothing is worth. And nothing is worse than coal, nothing. So, I just want, I wanted to find out more about what goes on after this. I'm not ready to vote on it tonight. And not that I'm taking a position either way. I need more information.
I'm waiting on responses from the company to my questions today, where they promised some follow-up.
Are they putting it together? Okay. Anybody else?
I would rather wait.
That's all right.
I have five votes to put it on at this point, Director, so.
The, well, it appears that we don't have the five votes to put it on for consideration. To expand on what Commissioner Best said, the issue I have here with this whole operation, and by the way, I want to thank all the folks that came out and all those emails. But they made me go out and do my homework on this issue. We live in a day and age where people seem to give their opinion as to how things should be, and then everybody runs with that. I was a little troubled after I did a little homework by some of the comments in the emails. And if you recall, I specifically asked the company about the release of all the gases that were talked about in the emails. And on the record, he said, "No, there is no release, very minimal." But more importantly than that, the, well, more importantly than that, I have faith and trust in the regulatory agencies that have oversight in this. We're coming to a place where we don't care, we don't believe different things. I have to have faith in something. I have faith in the DEP. I have faith in FERC. I have faith in the U.S. Department of Transportation and the other regulatory agencies that have oversight over this. For me to, if, in fact, it did come to a vote, for me to say that I don't care what the people that know what's going on have to say about it. I don't care that they approve it or dis, it's not my job. Along TJ Best's comments, my job is to have trust in the people that represent us, to have trust in the people that have oversight. And this is a very sensitive issue. And there's no question it's a sensitive issue. But at the end of the day, they're the ones that make the decision. They're the ones that will either have a thumbs up or thumbs down on this project. I'm not going to go against what they propose or what they finally, the conclusion that they come to. So, I can't vote for this resolution involving the, being opposed to this project. I just can't. And.
Through Director, and I'm not going to put it up for vote, because it's obvious how it's going to go. But if, and myself, if I were going to vote, I would vote against this. Vote for this resolution, I'm against this project. And I'm doing that strictly because I feel the impact of the environment is more important and, and organized labor. They're my friends, they're my guys, they ring my register. But I feel that this is so important. And we don't have a, we can't, public opinion, public opinion. As far as I'm concerned, the people that represent West Milford, not all of them, and that's the American way. But if I were to vote tonight, I would vote for this resolution to be sent to the governor. But I'm not going to put anybody else on the line here. You can count me that I was voting for this resolution, and I'm not going to put anybody else on that, on that line.
Director, through you, just a process question. So, to get the answers that some of the Commissioners still have outstanding. Do we want to submit them? Does the Representatives from Kinder Morgan, do they have the questions to be answered? And you'll, you'll get them to us in writing? And then I'll disseminate them to the, you know? Maybe what you could do is, can you, can you submit the list of questions as you, as you know them? And then I can make sure that it's all-inclusive, right? This way, we can try to get to the finish line here?
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Thank you.
Does that also include the questions that Commissioner Bartlett had?
If you could just put those in writing, email them to me. I'll give them to the freeholders. Maybe there'll be other questions between now and then that they may have.
Director, are we still sending to Trenton the remarks of the public?
Yeah, we could. We were doing it all along.
We have, yeah.
Yeah, we have no problem doing it.
Least we can do, I think. The number of objectors and the number of supporters, so we'll send it all to them.
And, and just for the record, and I'm not sure when it is. When is our next meeting? Tuesday.
23rd. 23rd.
So, the 23rd. So, we would need, it's two weeks from tonight, all right? So, we would need all of the answers then. And then so the public is aware that the next meeting will be on the 23rd.
Okay. All right. Getting back into, do you have any Commissioner reports? I have one.
Thank you.
Good night. Safe drive home, everyone.
All right, folks. On my report, as you know, over the summer, the board, okay? Maybe not?
We could just, if we could just ask everybody if you're going to have conversation to step outside as we still have the agenda to go through. You're welcome to stay, but.
Okay. As you know, over the summer, the board created the Passaic County Jail Assessment Committee, a cross-section of Commissioners, Sheriff Burdick, community stakeholders, labor leaders, to plot a path for the future of the Passaic County Jail. On October 5th, the committee unanimously authorized the county administrator to begin negotiations with Bergen County to explore the consolidation of our correctional services. The authorization was made in partnership with the PBA and union leadership and with the condition that we would save all jobs, ranks, and salaries for current employees. Following successful negotiation by the county administrator and a proactive initiative by Sheriff Burdick to ease overcrowding at the jail caused by COVID-19 distancing requirements, the board authorized a resolution approving a temporary agreement to transfer 200 inmates beginning on November 1st. I'm proud to report that, as of today, the transfers of these inmates is nearly complete. We are confident that this temporary agreement is going to lead to a long-term agreement with Bergen County to consolidate operations in what would be one of the largest shared service agreements in the state of New Jersey. An agreement that will save taxpayer dollars, save every job, provide flexibility for Sheriff Burdick to expand community policing programs throughout Passaic County. Finally, yesterday, Commissioner Lazar, Commissioner Best, and I, along with a contingent of representatives from the sheriff's office and judiciary toured the Bergen County facility. What we saw was a first-class facility with more resources and opportunities for Passaic County inmates to rehabilitate and to re-enter society as productive citizens. As we reach the final stretch of negotiations with Bergen County on this effort, I will provide a final report in December. I want to thank my colleagues, Sheriff Burdick, the PBA leadership, and all the stakeholders involved in this initiative. Thank you very much. And any questions? Be happy to entertain.
Just, just to clear the record, the transfer of 200 prisoners will be completed tomorrow. I gave you bad information. I apologize.
The administrator gave me bad information. Transfer will be.
Not the first, won't be the last.
Tomorrow. Okay.
So, in regards to the tour, the facility was clearly superior to our facility. The one thing that I can say about our, the one thing that I can say about, I feel like I'm yelling right now. The one thing that I can say about our facility is that our facility is a clean facility despite it being old and having deficiencies in the structure itself. Our guys and women there are doing an outstanding job of keeping our facility. But you immediately noticed the difference of newer facility. There's only been so many times you could shine a floor. You know, when is that old? But the immediate impression I got was that it was a clean facility. It was a modern facility, and it was a safe facility. The thing that I appreciated most about it is their method that they use allows for more, I want to say, civility towards the inmates, make them feel more like people. It's not hurting animals. It's an environment where the inmates, as long as they follow the rules, have the ability to, you know, rehabilitate in an environment that is productive for them to enter into, back into society. And right now, there are some things that they are allowed to do with their inmates that we just can't do based on our facility. So, even though someone has done a crime and they have to pay for that crime, they need to be treated like humans, they need to be treated with respect, and they need to have the opportunities to effectively rehabilitate, to stop them from entering back into the system. And I think that the facility does that well. It lends itself to that. And the fact that we're going to have the ability to send some of our great corrections officers over there with them, I think will be even greater. So, I really appreciate the tour, the opportunity to see the facilities, and see where our inmates are going to be at. You know, while we were there on the tour, they were completing a transfer of some of our inmates. Unfortunately, I recognize some of them. And, but you could immediately tell they run a tight ship. And it was a good save for our.
And if I can add to that, T, thank you for your comments. The, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that if we had the same type of facility here in Passaic County, the same result would happen, which is what's going on at Bergen County. Unfortunately, our facility is so old. Bergen County has direct supervision. We're not capable of doing that. Bergen County has a more open-floor plan. Ours isn't built that way. So, it's, it's just a better environment, which I said from the very beginning. When we first talked about doing this, I said, "This is all about improving the environment, not only for the corrections officers, but also for the inmates." And you saw it right away, and you felt it. Now, we'll see what happens when everybody gets shipped over there and the area becomes a little more dense, densely populated. But we are going to keep an eye, hit my hand. We are going to keep an eye on that moving forward. We're going to have oversight. The sheriff's department's going to have oversight and just keep track of what's going on over there. In the event that anything comes up or pops up that needs immediate attention, we'll be able to address it rather quickly. But I have full faith and confidence in the Bergen County Sheriff's Department to handle everything that's going on. And hopefully, you know, we'll have a good end to this. All right. Anybody else? Moving on. There's no communications. Consent agenda, we have late starters?
Yes. Through Director, I'd like to remove Resolution L7 from the consent agenda.
Remove L7?
Yes. And that's the resolution on the pipeline? We're going to remove it from the consent agenda and still vote.
No, it's not.
Oh, it's being removed to be voted on as a non-consent agenda.
Right.
If you remember.
How about the resolution authorizing the chief financial officer to execute budget transfer?
Yeah. Budget transfer requires five votes for adoption. So, typically, it is listed separately on the agenda. But since this was the first of the year, we'll give, we'll give Lisa a little break.
Okay, so we're moving L7? Anybody else?
We're removing it from the consent agenda, and it will be.
Voted on separately.
Separately. And we have one amendment. Would like to amend Resolution L5 to attach to fully executed business entity disclosure certification by Admins Gov Tech Incorporated. So, this is being amended. We have one late starter, Resolution L7. This is a resolution authorizing the Passaic County Sheriff's Office to acquire a mine restraint ambush protected vehicle from the federal 1033 program to be utilized for the police rescue operations.
What was that?
So, L57.
L57.
Okay. Don't need a motion to remove, right? Or do we?
You should have a motion to.
Is it? Motion to remove. Right. Remove it, and then somebody moves it.
Hey, you could just remove it, right? Seven?
I'll remove L7 for a separate vote. And I need a motion to amend L5 and L57, which has, based on.
So moved.
One of these days, I'm going to see the glass.
Deputy Director. County Commissioners, Opter.
We're amending L5 and adding late starter L57.
Bartlett, yes. Best. Duffy.
Yes.
Lazar.
Yes.
Deputy Director James. Director Lapour.
Yes. Now, I'll take a motion on L7, and we need five votes for passage.
So moved. A second.
Motion made by Commissioner Bartlett, second by Commissioner James. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Opter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazar.
Yes.
Deputy Director James. Director Lapour.
Yes. New business personnel?
No, 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 no.
We didn't vote on the consent agenda.
We didn't vote on the consent agenda.
Let's go back and do that, now that we've done seven separately.
I hit my head on this.
I had my booster. No, I actually had the third.
It may not be.
This one and this one. Should all read together, right?
Did you have yours?
Approve items L1 to L6 with amended L5 and a motion to approve items L8. Approve items L.1 to L.6 with amended L.5, and a motion to approve items L.8 to L.57.
Move it.
Second.
Made by Deputy Director James, second by Commissioner Duffy. Roll call.
County Commissioners Opter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lepore?
Are we taking a motion on L.7? That's the one we need five votes for?
We already did that.
We did that already. Try, I move the personnel agenda.
Motion made by Deputy Director James?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lazara. Roll call.
County Commissioners Opter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lepore?
Yes. Move the bills list?
Move the bills list.
By James?
Second.
Second by Lazara. Roll call.
County Commissioners Opter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lepore?
Yes.
Before we adjourn, can I say one thing there, Director? I think that you handled the whole situation properly, gave everybody a chance to speak, to, you know, vent and say whatever they had to say, and I think it was the proper way to handle it, and you did a great job.
Thank you.
I agree with you, Bruce.
You all did, you all did well. You all did well. It was a difficult situation.
It was. It was, and you handled it well.
All right, motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
Motion made by Duffy?
Second.
Second by Lazara. Roll call.
County Commissioners Opter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.